With pleasure, allegiance, and then we will have the moment of silence for Mayor Dolly Allen. With pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded on liberty and justice for all. For those who don't know, Gally's founder, President Speaker Mayor of City of Hudson, she lived there, she came in after her husband died in office.
Hala, who is here?
Here.
Hala.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Florenti.
Here.
Isan.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Presley, Pedro.
Here.
Motion is expensive, the meeting admits the main fifteenth meeting and place them on file. Can I have a motion? Eileen, second. The one, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. On the desks have been committee reports, and I have a motion and a second place committee reports on five. Motion? Rob, second. Galloway. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have four communications from the Hudson Building Corps, Warren for the Kennedy, actually three communications, and a student shop. We're going to receive them now, but we're going to talk about a couple of them later when we get to whole business. I have a motion and a second to receive the communications and place them on file. Motion? Eileen, second. The one, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First order of business to take the bills. One bill that is not included, that's it, you're not go through the finance committee. So we're moving from this to the Marshal of Sterling King. Good, since I don't know what his order. We have before you the list of bills. Any questions from the council? Take some time, come on, look it over. Any question? Can I have a motion? To, hey Rose? Eileen, second. Rob? Roll call vote, please.
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola. Presley, Pedro.
Removing Resolution Number Five up in the order to accommodate some guests. It's the motion number five encouraging city residents and business owners to adopt Think Differently initiative to assist families and individuals who's special needs. We'll have two very short presentations, one by Michael Cole.
Good evening, I'm Michael Cole, Director of Committee Services for Columbia County. I work for the board supervisors and I work for our Columbia County Committee of Services Board advocating for the needs of individuals impacted by disorders of mental illness, substance abuse, and intellectual disabilities. And I'm here to appeal to your support to consider adopting Think Differently campaign. This is something that Mark Malanar of the Duchess County in 2013 initiated, other programs like this have been initiated. It's basically a philosophical framework that community, family, or business, any organization can adopt to recognize the different abilities and special needs of all of us and to consider all of those needs. And when we design all the spaces, all the buildings, programs, and the like, this is an intent to increase our consciousness at every step of government or an organization's process to take full advantage of the resources that all of us have, whether we have different needs and different abilities or not. And I just urge you to consider this framework. This has been adopted by the Columbia County Board of Supervisors, I believe, about eighteen months ago. And it can take many forms, and I will go into that, because I've got three minutes, I think I've got to go.
Thank you. I think, and we also have Tom Argy from the Didi Barrett's office, so I'd like to make a brief statement.
Yes, thank you. And, oh, and we, our friends from Co-Rock are also here, if they could speak briefly about it. So I'm going to read a statement on behalf of my boss, Assemblymember Didi Barrett. Think Differently asks people in municipalities to become more aware and to learn how to accommodate the needs of all members of the community. It encourages our communities to take actions in our business and public events that are more welcoming for families with special needs. For example, in Duchess County, which I also represent, some movie theaters host a special film screening and the Duchess County Fair opens early one morning each year to operate without loud noises and flashing lights. Think Differently also teaches first responders and others to become more familiar with how a person on the autism spectrum might respond when frightened. The initiatives promoted by Think Differently are part of making our communities more inclusive and welcoming for all New Yorkers. By approving this resolution, you are helping Hudson, a city already known for its diversity, extend its embrace to our family, friends, and neighbors living with physical and developmental disabilities. Thank you again for your consideration.
I'll thank all the members of our counterpart, Matt Gofer, for coming out to support this. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Next. May I have that, Pete, have a roll call?
Can I just ask an question? In the first paragraph, can we add the word "and" in that last line of the first paragraph such as spectrum, "and" with "special needs," because otherwise it just reads, it's only covering autism spectrum with special needs.
Do you need a motion, please?
You should probably take a motion in a second.
Rob, your name?
Oh wait, I'm listening to that. "And" between "spectrum" and "and" with "special needs."
Second, please. Dominic, all in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. That passes, so now we can actually have a roll call vote.
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola. Presley, Pedro. Here.
First resolution, appointing Christian McAdams. Can I have a roll call vote?
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro. Here.
Resolution authorizing transfer funds to the youth department, transferring funds from their maintenance, to their personal services. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of donations to the Hudson Youth Department from the Friends of Hudson Youth. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a release of any reversionary interest in twenty thirty prosecute. For those who are unfamiliar with this, it's not worth explaining there. But we've got the question asked, the mayor. No, it's a simple transaction, a simple resolution, just to clear up a long outstanding matter that was settled in nineteen, it's only for the purposes of the title and search. Do I have a, I mean, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
Resolution authorizing the sale of the old chairs in the chamber as circles properly. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
A resolution accepting donations on behalf of Hudson Fire Department in memory of Mark Braziano totaling five hundred and fifty dollars. Can I have a roll call vote?
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
Now, some of the new resolutions. First is resolution accepting donations on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department dive team for seventy-two dollars. May I have an introduction and a second? Eileen, Rob, roll call vote, please.
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Resolution number nine, authorizing transfer funds from the youth department donations account to other accounts to cover costs or maintenance improvements at Oakdale. I have an introduction and a second. Galloway, second. The one, roll call vote, please.
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
Resolution number ten, accepting polar plunge donations on behalf of the Department of Youth totaling ten thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and forty-one cents. Can I have an introduction and a second? The one, introduce it, the second, please. Rich, roll call vote, please.
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
Resolution number eleven, accepting polar plunge donations on behalf of the Fire Department of Fire. Let me correct that, the total of these two donations is ten thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and forty-one cents. The Fire Department one is four thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. May I have an introduction and a second? Rich, the one, roll call vote, please.
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
Stand.
Here.
Resolution number twelve, accepting fishing jury donations on behalf of the Department of Youth totaling two thousand five hundred dollars. May I have an introduction and a second? Galloway, second. Rob, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
Stand.
Here.
Resolution number thirteen for a moment, and go to fourteen. A resolution approving the two thousand seventeen firefighting listing for sure to the service award program. This is just in terms of listing active members who qualify for the service award program, which was enacted a year ago. Do I have an introduction and a second? Eileen, the one, roll call vote, please.
Hey, Thomas. I'm just curious, this is really a question, I think, more for Andy than anyone else, because by accepting the list, my understanding is you're assuming that all of those people are therefore integral for the monies to be set aside for them. There's a certain amount in the budget, and I'm wondering whether anybody has assessed whether or not the list fits within the budget, because if not, I assume you would need to do a budget amendment before you can accept a list.
I have not looked at this. I know, I know the point, all those were calculated in April, the county council approved the publishing of the list, the calculation, I'm not aware.
And, yeah, and I haven't seen it, so I don't have any insight into that, but I'm just not sure, procedurally, you can approve it unless you know that the funds are appropriately set aside.
Well, I think they could go ahead and approve the question, I mean, they have to go back, they have to go back with a budget amendment.
We're just accepting that these members as being listed, which means no commitment to them being.
Well, except I think by accepting the list, you're by definition saying therefore X amount of monies are set aside for the people that you accepted. And I'm not sure you can do that unless you know for sure there's enough money allocated in the budget to accept it.
What was sent to me today was just the calculation of the blanks that each particular firefighter had, and the authorization for the mayor to recognize that. There was not, in anything that I saw, there was a number for the dollar.
Okay.
I haven't seen it, they haven't, I haven't seen it.
I'm not sure whether they wouldn't buy the cost associated with it, but again, based on my understanding of procedure, unless you know for sure that the list that's accepted will fall within the parameters of what's currently being budgeted, I'm not sure you can accept it.
I think you can, in fact, it's related to another resolution thirteen, which is in which we've already had a ruling last year from Ken Dowd saying that we can approve the resolution before the B O E checks in with an amendment. It just doesn't get approved, doesn't get fully approved until the B O E signs off.
Sure, okay, fair enough.
So can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hala, who is here?
Aye.
Hallen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Rosado.
Lewis.
Aye.
Florenti.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lola.
Aye.
Presley, Pedro.
Okay, going back to thirteen. This is authorizing a budget amendment from the fund balance to the youth department accounts to provide services to the city's youth. This has also not been signed off on by the board of estimate, but we can vote for this resolution before that happens. And I want to have a discussion, if there's any comments, from the council members.
I mean, I would cover those, a lot of these proposals in here are things that were asked for by the community and also by members of the council. And if we want to have a safe, fun youth center, then this is something that we need to take serious as a council. So, again, we're trying to pull out, you see fit, but for those who came to the last youth committee meeting, you understand the seriousness of this proposal.
Dominic?
I think that maybe assessing fire rate, listen, as somebody's saying, and you see, obviously, I've been spiraling with immigrant issue, but for example, with the newly vital one C acquisition that may be vacant solicit at least a part of the insurance department to help finance the fingerprint component through their union or grants. And also some of the other things that are here, I think, need to be back to the finance committee, break it down, whatever, like what can be done and needed now to make programs, you know, work, you know, okay, you know, fluid and not interfere program, because a lot of these things here, you know, the improvements to, hopefully, there will definitely be obstacle, that would be first thing to say. However, this isn't a new issue, and to hit us at eleven hours with this amount, and we know we have polar punch money that need, you know, some self-doubtism in this, and maybe reassess the finance, that I know down the road, the fire departments will be asking for some money for some equipment that will definitely, you know, in September. So that'd be my suggestion, is reassessing and break down the list to see where you can adjust.
Chairman?
I share some of your concerns, Tommy, but there are things of the fire alarm system, and Victor's nice enough to take me through a lot of this the other day. Fire alarm system over at the youth center, I think, we should, we should get that, get that done.
Yeah, that's right.
Because we'd hate to have it, but I mean, not wait for another month. If, if these, if these expenditures can be taken from fund balance, I think in the interest of being able to fund the summer program the way we want it to be delayed until July, I'm not sure what that does to, to the department's budget, but it may not allow them to do what they, what they need to do.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying here, like some of the things with the check-in system, you know, that's probably not the operation of the, because it's.
Right, I agree, it could, could have been prioritized, but it isn't, and.
A list that doesn't interfere with the camp, that, you know, moving the program, you know, for this summer, it can't.
But if we send it back to committee, then it won't come, and summer will be almost careful by the, you know, by the time we get it out of the committee, with it doesn't live.
What, I mean, you know, make, see, we can hash it out and make a minimum now.
Rich, I'll speak to the check-in system, which I helped research, that, like, lots of, seven thousand dollars, that just runs like pay itself back, because number one, we need a check-out system, we need for liability issues for the youth to have a check-in card or something to check in and to check out. And the reason why it's going to pay itself back is because the staff will also be able to check themselves in and check themselves out. This way, appropriate timesheet reports can be, you know, done, that will save time, I know, with the manual, it'll save time and be more accurate. Also, then the youth will have an ID card to be able to leave when they check in, check in, out, and I think that would keep better track of the equipment, to make sure the equipment is there, which will lessen the burden of the budget. So, I can speak to that issue, it is a one-time cost, most of it, there's a small surface behavior, but that I think is going to make it somewhat better back for them, you know, too, so.
All of it, yes.
All of it, yes, that's kind of, maybe a lot of it is a one-time cost, a lot of it, but, you know. I agree, but is it something that we need right now for camp, it's going to be implemented for camp? You know, and I know there's, there's, you know, some interest in extending, you know, of, you know, like the beach hours, so there's, there's another, you know, initial that has been, so, and I don't see how this, this amendment is addressing that.
Council members, any other questions, or?
Rob? Well, the question is, can we go down this list, you know, on the second page, and can we say, from the total of these individual, overall, like fire lines, fingerprinting, check-in, youth center, I mean, youth center heating system, you probably would have offer a bunch and send it to the finance committee, which is next week instead of just a happen, because I had, I'm happy to add whatever we need to do, whatever your agenda, I mean.
Nick, did you want to repeat that, as director of the city's?
Yeah, I would just say, in answer to the questions that have already been asked, if we didn't want to defer any items on here, the fire alarm system, we're actually, we were closing down the youth center next week, so we'll be out of the youth center for the next two and a half months, or two months. So if that needed to go to finance, take another month, it's not going to be a direct safety issue, our kids are going to be at Oakdale, it's going to be minimal programming there. The fingerprinting system, we, I think if, if this did go through tonight, and they were, we were able to make the voucher process work, there is a chance that we could have the, oh, sorry, not the fingerprint, the check-in system could actually work for this summer, that's what we're hoping to do. I don't know if you remember, Rich, but I, I want to say, he said he thought it could be up and running in three weeks, so, so I think that there's a possibility of that. The fingerprinting system, if we put that off, we don't get to fingerprint our summer employees, and we go, we go to the fall for that. The heating system could also be deferred, because we're not going to be heating until November, the DPW is going to be doing that work, they're probably not going to be able to get to it till the fall anyway, so that's one that could be deferred. The staffing costs have already been paid for, the fence at Oakdale, that's up to, up to the council, obviously. It's going to receive, that area is going to have the most amount of use coming up in the next two months, so that's when the most balls are going to be going over, out of the basketball court and down into the lake. And then the Oakdale renovations, I think those are, in terms of priorities for time, those are top priorities, and the lifeguards would be the same. So that's just how I would break it down in terms of the timetable, and, and like, just to give a little step back, I was just trying to put numbers, detail, estimates to the things that came from the county council, youth agent committee, the mayor, conversation with the community also, so if it's, if you're able to break it down into these individual numbers and do it, I'll, I'll defer to how the council wants to go about, go about doing it. That would be my prioritization of items in terms of time.
Well, I understand the motion to delete those two items from this resolution. Do I have a motion?
We're talking about the fire alarm system.
Fire alarm.
So that's sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, I'm twenty thousand hundred.
They're both within the same category, so we can just revise one launch.
So a motion to amend it. Rob, second. Shoshaw, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, so it's amended to eliminate those two items. And now, this Heather. that have been sitting in the youth department budget for almost a year and a half. We also increased the youth program budget by over four thousand dollars versus what was requested. So if you add those up, that's about seventeen thousand dollars. I would suggest at minimum, that seventeen thousand dollars be used against whatever expenditures we decide are appropriate before we start tapping into the tax dollars. Because those are all unclaimed dollars right now, so they should be used for youth department budgets. My second observation, I know many of you were not on the council a year ago, but just as an interesting FYI, something I find slightly disturbing, is that almost exactly a year ago, the council approved a seventy-two thousand dollar increase to the youth department budget, of which thirteen thousand four hundred was for improvements to the youth department, including a fire alarm and a suppression system, and including an improvement to the heating. The monies were approved, they were given to the youth department. Those improvements did not happen, and yet the money was no longer there at the end of the year. It was spent on other things, I could not tell you on what. So I just think it's important to understand that we have, and the taxpayers have funded this request a year ago, did not get what we were supposed to, and now we're facing another request for the same amount of money. And I personally, you know, as a chief fiscal officer, find that disturbing, and I think it's something you need to be aware of.
Thank you. Mayor?
Um, yes, thank you. The only objection I have, Nick, is eliminating the heating system. We know we're going to need that. That is something I'm very supportive of, that we put through as quickly as possible. DPW won't do the work until this fall, but we desperately need the money there. So delaying is not going to do any good, and we can go ahead and vote on that for, is it four thousand dollars?
Yes.
Well, we already amended it, so.
Well, that's what we did.
But we're not, we're not taking it out, we're pushing it back to go to finance, it'll still get done.
So you, you revisit that, when?
After go to finance, that's the extra money.
Thank you.
I don't really have, sorry.
Yes?
I don't really understand the point of taking it out if everybody's sitting here saying it has to be done, and it's not an option. So all you're doing is saying, we're going to make a decision to not make the exact same decision in a couple of months from now. I, I don't understand the productivity of that.
Thank you. Nick, one last comment?
Uh, just to give a, a quick response to answer some of your questions, Heather. The, the budget amendment that was last year at this time was, was kind of a different scale, and it was because at that point, there wasn't going to be an Oakdale camp. So it was a pretty large budget amendment to be able to actually bring Oakdale camp back and do that. So it was a little bit different, but it was a similar situation coming into summer camp and, and summer camp season, wanting to continue that program. The big difference is, these items didn't come from me this year. And so in terms of the suspicion of, of, of whatever suspicion that is, I didn't put these things forward. These things came from conversations with common council members, conversations with youth and aging and the mayor. And the, you're absolutely right that last year there was a component of that that was for the youth center. Work on the third floor, work on, in the gym to the, to both the fire alarm system and the overall safety systems of the heating units. And that work did get done. And if you want what I can do for the next common council, or I can bring it to your office, is provide some photos, look at the work that got done, what we did ourselves in-house, what we hired out for, and I can show you some of the accounting for, for where that money got spent. The fire alarm system.
You had six thousand dollars in the budget specifically of the money that was granted to you for a fire suppression system a year ago. If the fire suppression system wasn't put in, then that six thousand dollars should remain. But the six thousand dollars doesn't remain, and we also don't have a fire suppression system, and now you're looking for another six or seven thousand dollars again for the same expense. You can understand why that would be concerning.
No, I totally can, so that's why I'm, I'm going to go over the reasoning for that. We, it started, and I, I said this to the youth and aging committee, but when I first got to the youth department, one of the first things I did was ask, what's our fire plan? What happens if we have a fire? Where do kids go? What are the direct routes out? I was pointed to a, to a laminated map on the wall. When I got there, looked at it, started turning it around, trying to figure out which store was which, I realized it was for the wrong building. It wasn't for the youth department. So I called in Craig Hague, and he brought his fire inspector. They looked at the whole system, found several flaws, and they actually said, you can't open today until you do X, Y, and Z. We spent an initial amount to put in new carbon monoxide, new fire alarms that day just to be able to open up. Then we had to do another round of exit lights, different kinds of detectors. It went all around the building, and it's part of that.
But those were separate cost items in, in last year's resolutions. Like your exit lights and everything were entirely different amount of money compared to the money that you had for the fire suppression system. Nobody's questioning that it's not incredibly important, I support it. I'm just concerned that if it was so critically important and the money was provided in the budget through a resolution a year ago, number one, it didn't happen immediately, if it's the most critical thing. And number two, the money got spent on something else, which is not how taxpayer, taxpayer dollars should be spent. So, I mean, that, that's just my point, I'm, I'm done, though I just thought you should be informed.
So, so where I was going with this story is, part of what, what we were, what I was asked to do by Craig was to bring in the company who provides fire alarm systems for the rest of the city. So I did, so we brought in SNF, and we've pretty much been working with them since, I want to say, April or May of last year, to try to decide what the best thing to do moving forward is. The existing system, the existing system we have is not providing the service that we want. But we're in a contract with them, and so the result of, of this eight months' worth of, eight or nine months' worth of going back and forth with them is an estimate that they gave, which was significantly higher, orders of magnitude, almost higher than what we, than the estimate that before the council now. It didn't seem reasonable if we're looking at possibly moving out of that building in the next five years or doing a revamp of that building. So we went and got other estimates. But over the course of that, we were, we were going through this process. We were trying to figure out what the next step with the fire alarm system was. And that money did get reallocated to do other things in the youth department. And I can, like I said, go over a list of all the improvements that were made. Some of them were fire, fire-related issues that Craig Hague called out. He had a whole list of all the different things that were fired at between the building. So we can go over a list of everything that was done that, that helped that end. But it has been a priority, and we've been in conversation with Craig this whole time, conversation with SNF, and we're just finally getting an estimate that's reasonable for the building so that we can move forward. That's, that would be my, my narrative as to where, where that money went and how, how we're moving forward to try to get the system now to get the best alarm system we can.
Can I have an, oh, guess question?
Yeah.
Well, John's first.
What if we look at the immediate funding that is assessed, at least for the Oakdale programming, et cetera, and sort of separates them the south, and then try to audit some of the previous spending? There's a discrepancy table that we, the, but if there is a necessity, if there's a necessity for immediate funds for the kids this summer, would we be able to provide them?
Well, actually, almost everything left after we take out those two R and O, there's a red hag. Any other council comments? Darma?
Nick, I got, you know, I've been an advocate for the fingerprint. So it's been since, since November we've been on this, right? So, and you know, right now, we're no closer to having the fingerprinting done for the camp staff, right? That starts in three weeks. And logistically, to have this happen in three weeks, it's, it's not feasible. So I'm, what I'm saying is that the fingerprinting, if it's not going to happen for camp, we need to reassess it, see if we can find alternative forms, and make sure it happens in September. Because if, if this is something we can break down, because like I said, with the lifeguarding here, what is the lifeguarding? Is that for the extra hours, the extended hours that, that?
Yeah, there's a little, there's a little narrative on there. First, I'll just answer your first question first. I wouldn't say that we're no closer, because we've re-upped our entire contract that the city of Hudson had with the Department of Justice, which had fallen totally on the wayside. And we contacted them, you helped with that process. We went, they signed, they sent us a contract, I sent it to Andy Howard. Andy Howard went through it, said, yep, this is all good stuff. He got back to me as soon as that happened. I signed it, I sent it back to them, they've approved it, and now I need to go through a background check, and that process is, is moving along. So I wouldn't say that we're no closer, we have been steadily moving along and moving forward with that. And after I get these background checks and they set up the system, we can move forward. It won't happen before the beginning of camp, but it will happen while we have our summer hires on. We're already going to have to retroactively go through and fingerprint all of our existing staff. So whether it happens, it would be great to do it at the beginning of camp when they all come in. But as soon as we have the system up and running, we'll be able to check and make sure that everybody we get hired on is, is on. But like I said, this is just, I just want to reiterate, this is me, I mean, that was something that came from you. I really appreciate it, but if you want to push it back, that's, that's up to you. I'm fine to do that, and figure out the next step.
If you can have it happen, you know where I am with this. But I'm trying to stay fiscally responsible and prudent, just saying that you're talking logistically now during camp, okay? We know the process, Albany or Kusaki. So we're going to close camp during the time of fingerprinting, if camp is open, for the staff to be fingerprinted? And if the staff fail, then, then what? So I'm, I'm, you know where I am with this. I'm just saying, if you're, if you can guarantee that it's going to happen, let's do it. But if, if you're saying that there's no guarantee, we're going to throw this three thousand dollars out there, there's no guarantee. But I, because I'm saying that we need to figure out where we can put this to make it happen and be a priority. And you know fingerprint is my priority, it's bad. But, and I don't want to push it back if you tell me it can happen. And, and with the lifeguarding, is that for the extra hours that's asked? Or is that something new from the last year's budget? Because there's people interested in extended hours. So is that extra lifeguarding is going to be addressing those extended hours?
It is, and basically what we're looking at is, last year, we kind of brought summer camp back from, from being out of the budget. And to do that in a really short amount of time, we just went with the figures that we, the roughest figures that we had from the year before. And we were able to, to kind of scrape by, provide a safe, enriching camp for the kids. But we weren't able to do all the hours that we wanted to, to bring everybody on as much as we want to pay the wages. It was a very kind of bare bones camp last year. And we didn't get to do all the proper accounting last year that we wanted to, because it was such a rush. It wasn't until this spring that I've been able to fully budget every employee through every week, not only through the summer, but through the rest of the year. And as I did that, it became very clear that one of the big costs was lifeguards outside of camp hours on weekends and afternoons. So this is separate from the programming that the youth department is, is, is kind of tasked to do of running a camp from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon. We were paying for lifeguards for the public, which is a great thing. I hear from a lot of people who really want lifeguards out there, they wanted them there a few weeks ago. And so what I did was I broke it off and showed you what it costs to have lifeguards outside of our camp hours, afternoons and weekends, the traditional hours that the community has come to expect for, for lifeguards. I'm happy to do it through my budget and pay for those, but I want the common council to be clear that this is not something that is part of what we're doing with our camp.
So, so what is the, why can't, community came together for the polar punch. Why can't we use polar punch money to get back to this community and extend the hours?
I've been made to believe that donations couldn't go towards personnel, but maybe they can. I don't know, Heather, maybe I'll speak to that.
Again, I'm just going to reiterate the point that I made, which is between the donations that come in over the past two years and donations accepted tonight, they're somewhere between twelve and seventeen thousand dollars that I absolutely should, that I absolutely believe should be the first source of any kind of additional spending for the youth department before any fund balance is used, so.
Can it be used for personnel? Because it, it should be unrestricted if it came from the donation, right? Like, like the polar punch was really unrestricted because it's kind of open for, you know, programs and for open.
Yeah, I mean, I would defer to Andy, but my understanding is unless a donation comes with a specific, you know, like your donation that specifically goes to the police department for youth services, unless the donation is specific to a cause, it can be used however the municipality wants to use it.
That's correct.
Come on, your last, your last comment, please.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, a lot of these things are safety concerns. So I, I understand what Don was saying, that we have, if this goes like a week or two into camp and a staff fails, we would rather have that staff fail the test that we know than to have someone working that could be a potential danger to the cameras. So if it fails and it's done its job, and we have to take that serious. The back and forth that I'm hearing, as a parent and a community member and as a council member, I would be afraid to send my kid to this place without all of these things present. And the heating system, that was something that I personally grew up, and I don't know whether, what happened in the past, I can't speak for that one right here. But when I go to the center and I see youth there playing and they have coats and, you know, they're bundled up because the heat is not working, I'm not okay with that. So that's why I said this is something that we have to take serious. And I understand everyone's concerns, but a lot of these are safety issues. And these are things that are needed. If you look at any other youth program in the city, then all of these things are present. There's a fire tomorrow, you know, it's, what are we going to say? At some point, we as a city have to look after the youth, and we have to make them a priority.
Well, you know my philosophy.
I think I've got an end, but there are.
I want, I just, I want to make a comment. You know my philosophy, and every comment I've made, that committee has been stated, stated. That is my background, that's my interest. What I'm saying is that this can definitely happen, let's make it happen. But if we're saying we're going to have this three thousand dollars hanging out there, and we can use it somewhere else right now, or obtain other funding, that's not going to tax the taxpayers. And also, again, we're talking health and safety, we're going to be coming to this council for a good chunk of money for the fire department. So, so it's, it, there's, I'm just saying, in terms of the priority, in terms of guarantee, if this is going to happen, possible, but there's still no guarantee that it's going to happen in a six-week program. So, so if, if, if we say one weekend, absolutely, but again, we're looking at this as.
Darma, do you want to make an amendment to this, a further amendment?
I, I would definitely, well, I'll leave it up to pay, whatever, I just want that to be considered. I would like to see if we can amend the fingerprinting, if, if it's not going to happen. Or, you know, if it's going to happen, absolutely, that's a thing to set.
I'd like to make an amendment to spend the donations prior to the other money being spent. We are going to have a big, we're going to have a lot of money, but it's going to be asked for at the finance committee.
Okay. Rich, I assume you're setting up the poll, are you going to say aye?
Aye.
Anybody close?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand what you meant.
I would apply the donated money first. First.
Can you clarify, what donated money, Charlie?
That won't change the amounts that are being requested.
It will, in terms of public, just taking out a fund balance, that would have to be adjusted.
Right, right. So, we need to use a nap.
Do the numbers again. So let's go back to, to the, to the, to the. Can I get one clarification real quick?
Yeah.
Just, is that, are, are you proposing the, the rest of the money after the transfer that was already made here, what's left in donations right now?
Plus what was accepted tonight. So I can actually share those numbers with you if you'd like, because I have them.
Okay, not the Hudson youth donation?
Which one was that? But which was even?
No, no, that was just a, that's just a, that's just a dural.
Right, it was all polar punch money, right?
I'm trying to keep this just to the.
I, I understand, but I have another comment.
I'd rather just keep the record, because this is getting more confusing as it is. So we're talking about.
We had a donation of fifty-nine, seven, three, twenty-one. And we had a donation of twenty. And we had a donation of 20, 25, $2,025. After the $8,500 transfer, um, the current pool of donation monies, that leaves a balance of 49,4391. Together, that's $12,942.12. It was also an extra $4,309 added to the youth programs budget, um, beyond what Nick had requested, so I would add that in as well, and that gives you a total of $17,241.12, I believe.
Could they go, could you work with Nick to, 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 uh, to just revise these numbers?
I think all you need to do is take out $17,242 out of one of the these fund balances, and you're good to go, if that's what you wanna do.
That's after we've taken out the Fireline Youth Center, uh, key, you know, right?
Well, again, I don't believe you see the point of taking them out, but since you have chosen to.
I'm asking you if that figure is the figure after.
The figure is the amount that the grants are worth, so you would take that amount out of however much in total you're taking out of these fund balances. You would reduce.
No, you gave us a total, that wasn't.
Yes, sorry, so you would reduce the use of, the total use of fund balances, reduce by that number.
Okay. And that's our.
Can I have an introduction?
I, I mean, before you take money out of my, out of my budget, I'd like to talk. I mean, I think that's fair.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no. Too much like we did today, it's, that's a, that's a, so what happens is 17, that is.
We just have to find their budget to spend it, but it gets, and it does the donations line. I haven't.
As many of you.
Go ahead.
This is the source, yes, however.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, just before there's further discussion, one possibility, based on treasure's comments, would be if we look at your resolution, if there is $17,241 available, okay? Um, what you can do is you could, for instance, take the first line, where you're using fund balance of $16,651.17, and you could take out $5,241, so the new number would be $11,410.17. And then moving down two lines, where you're talking about using fund balance of $12,766, you can use fund balance of $7,666. All your expenditures under that scenario would remain the same, meaning all of them would be funded, okay? It's just that you wouldn't be using that, and then what you would be adding is you'd be adding the use of donations from, um, is it a particular, I mean, I have one account, Heather, I don't know if it's in more than one.
I think they're all going into the same account, so whichever one that, you can look at one of the resolutions from tonight where we were accepting it into their expenditure account, that would be the expenditure account.
I don't think. Can I make a? If we just, if we just, just so we have one, then we can talk around. And then what you would do to complete that is you would also resolve to utilize the sum of $17,241 from the eight, um, two zero eight nine account.
Actually, that's.
That is what you could do. I'm not suggesting that is what you should, will do. You could have a discussion, but instead of having multiple conversations, that is what the treasurer's talking about.
Right. With one minor correction.
Yep.
Um, because actually, in the donations line, there will only be $12,942.
Okay.
Um, the other 4309 was additional funds that were added into the equipment account, which you may or may not choose to reallocate. But the donations after the $8,500 transfer that you proved tonight would be $12,942.
Right. If you were to do the whole 17,2, it would be from the eight, two oh eight nine, and it would also be from the youth, but again, for purposes of discussion. So everyone understands?
Just one more of the mechanics, don't we have to make the puts and takes equal?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've got.
But basically, I don't, I don't remember what is roughly $50,000, right?
Right.
I don't know if now you're going back to keeping everything or not keeping it.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, it would be $50,000, instead of $50,000 coming out of fund balance, it would be either 48 or 43 coming out of fund balance, and the rest would come from using the donations.
Right, but we have to make the, the two lines equal, that we, if we want to increase the 7310, 450, and we wanna use two sources, I think, some from fund balance and some from donations.
Yeah.
Don't we have to show that? Where it's coming from?
Yeah, you would have to modify, you'd have to change, because you have to show what the sources of, of revenue are from, sure. But that's what Andy was explaining, just the.
There's not any trouble, I'm sorry. The money that was donated for the fishing derby was donated for a specific cause. I think the council deserves to know that they're choosing to reallocate donations from.
I think Nick could speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanna make clear to the, to the council, and I don't, I, I don't know if I fully understand, um, what's happening. I think that, so we have a line in our budget for donations. Lots of donations come in from different things, fishing derby, polar plunge, people wanted to go to a specific purpose or a general purpose that they wanna see.
I'm kinda, I'm kinda curious why you didn't bring that up earlier in this conversation.
I, I have my hand raised, and you kinda, you, you said no.
Sure.
I mean, I, I just wanted.
They were, they were allocated to specific.
Some donations come, just a donation to the youth center, some come to the specific thing. The fishing derby was specifically to offset the cost of, uh, the, the fish that gets stocked in Oakdale Pond. That's. But to be, but to be clear, that, and again, I'm not just. Yeah. What's being talked about here are specifically the donations that were accepted tonight from, from the polar plunge. Had nothing to do with the fishing derby, nothing to do with the minimal donations.
No, that's entirely true, because we were talking about, so basically, at the end of last year, there was approximately $12,000 in donations that the youth department elected not to spend and carried it over to this year. They're now transferring $8,500 out of that. Um, I understand what, what Nick and, and Peter are saying, and I think that that's accurate, so the question is, where are the expense lines for the fishing derby, and how are you demonstrating that those dollars are being applied against those expenses? Because that's what you need to do if people are donating money for a specific thing. So if you have an invoice for the fish that you stock or for fishing pools, those invoices need to be paid separately from the donation money, or a portion of it, assuming that there's not enough donation money to cover the entire expense. So you should have records for all of that, showing, this is what we spent on the fishing derby, here are the donations, here's how the donation money was applied against the expenses of the fishing derby. So.
Right, and I think we can show that, and I think that part of the, one of the, the transfer that was, that was already approved was exactly that. You'll see, um, is it, uh, oh, it's on a different sheet. The money that's going into, I believe, equipment, um, for the, for the transfer resolution, that was money coming from, um, the fishing derby and from polar plunge to go towards the water treatment, and for the, part of it was going for the water treatment in Oakdale, part of it was going towards stocking those fish. And that was, uh, something close to $3,000 bill, and that's where that money was coming over for exactly that. That's what we're, that's what we're doing. And the rest of the donations, even though money was, was, was brought over from 2017, it doesn't mean that it's just loose money there that nobody cares about, doesn't have anything to do with. I've budgeted a lot of that money, I have programs, I have different things that I'm planning on spending, um, that on. I think it would be a good use to take a component of the polar plunge money and maybe a little more out of the donations and put it towards something like the lifeguards, because I think that that is in line with the polar, what, what the polar plunge was, was raising money for. Um, but $17,000, I may, I may rather retract this, because that's all of a sudden taking out of donations money that I had in the line in my account that I had budgeted for in 2018, that's all of a sudden gone, because I put together a, a list of the things that people in the common council and the mayor wanted to see. That's kinda the opposite of what I.
No, that's exactly what it is. You put together a list of things that the council wants to see.
I don't know if right now, it's just that we defer this to a special meeting, to be held. We'll hold it next Wednesday, so that we can hash all this out and have a fully prepared statement, youth center, and then it'll still be in time for everything. Uh, so that'll be on Wednesday at.
[inaudible].
So, Nick, I suggest you sit down with Heather and your dominant, and prepare this, so that we can have a little bit of a, easy. Okay? Special meeting next week, because obviously we can't figure this out, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Six o'clock. Okay, moving on. Um, I'm sorry that the public came out and discussed that, but if we love them, that we can do it. Before we go to some of the old business, I'd like to let our, our guests make their presentations next. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, sorry, I forgot to look the law. Look the law, amending the city code. Add chapter, um, 91 pertaining to victim killing. May I have a motion and a second to lay the proposed law on the alderman's desk? Motion, Eileen, second by Rob. Yeah. Sheena Salvino and Joe Chikar are here to tell us about something very encouraging, very exciting, which is an outcome of Tiffany Hamilton's strategic, I mean, um, housing task force that she established last year and finished up its business after a meeting, I believe. And I produced this document, which you all have on your desk. And I, at some point, we're going to ask to approve the document, which will then become one of those documents that allows us to do a lot of things. Is that accurate, uh, explanation? So you wanna, um, do your presentation?
Thank you. I'm the president, thank you, and I was the council, and our line is to give a short contribution about the process that we went through and what you have in front of you today. And by way of introduction, my name is Sheena Salvino, I'm the director of the Hudson Community Development Plan Agency, which is the city's public benefit authority, urban renewal agency. We were contacted by Patterns for Progress over two years ago to work together in some capacity, and was, uh, trying to find the right capacity to work with, and we came as far as creating an efficient way to use all of our resources to achieve some priority of the city. And the priority of the city that became very obvious through the downtown realizations, local planning committees, public engagement process, was housing as a topic of conversation. And housing is done in terms of short-term housing, long-term housing, affordable housing with a capital A and lowercase a. So what the mayor's housing task force did, was set up a volunteer task force to work with Patterns for Progress to develop an action plan to move housing priorities forward across the entire spectrum of housing, from very low income all the way up to workforce housing. So what we've come up with and what the Hudson Community Development Plan Agency is using to adopt is the plan that you see before us. And I hope you give full consideration to adopting this plan, and I will turn it over to Joe to kind of go a little bit further in the detail of how this was constructed and what was out in front of you. But thank you very much.
Hello, welcome, my name is Joe Chika, Sheena Salvino for Patterns for Progress. We started this process, I think, last September or October, and the, the goal was to create a strategic housing action plan for the city of Hudson. And so working with the task force on the heels of the downtown realization initiative to move engagement process, and on the countywide housing assessment that was completed in September of last year, we created a strategic housing action plan. And there are four overarching goals, and you've got that plan in front of you, is, that is, and I'm only just interrupt myself, there, that, the plan that you have in front of you is 30 pages out of about 150-page document. I do have the entire document here, that, the entire document includes appendix, which I'll, I'll get to in a moment. The document includes, uh, four overarching goals, and the four goals are, are very simple, and I'm not sure how much time I have, so just cut me off when you need to, but just gonna try to look through this quickly as I can. Preservation of housing is the first goal. Create comprehensive and complementary housing policy zoning is the second. The third is production of new housing options, and as Sheena said, it's a range of options, going from extremely very low-income housing all the way into housing for, uh, for desire and homeownership. Creating housing in community development programs in partnerships is the fourth goal. Examine the county commissioned housing study, again, was completed last fall, the DRI. We also took a look at the city comprehensive plan, which was conducted back in 2002, the housing needs analysis, uh, conducted in 2012, and the existing housing policy for the city. Additionally, I met with a couple of the housing agencies and those working in community development, including the two agencies that Sheena operates. Each goal in the plan includes background, you'll see a narrative, text description in there in the background, strategies and agit stacks, again, with identified community resources, estimated costs, timelines, hopefully those are sufficient enough to move forward. Pages 13 through 28, really get into the detail. And I, again, I encourage you to read through it. The plan also includes a list of current projects associated with housing. For example, the housing authority is looking at, uh, a new project down, uh, I think it's adjacent, and, and or across the street from their current operations. Site development of State and Plumwood Street, the Galloway Foundation has, had a funded operation planned for 29 additional housing units. The plan is consistent with those locally adopted plans that I just mentioned. So the 102 and 12 and the DRI is consistent with that. Consistency is the key. Did not create a document that is out of context and out of character with the community itself. The plan, again, has four appendix. Basic demographics, and that's a majority of the page, the pages in the, in the 150-page document. Within that demographic, you'll find something called a community profile. That is, that's only about 12 pages long, but it's a, it's a product, so to speak, of our agency, of Patterns for Progress. There's something that we call the Urban Action Agenda, which studies 25 communities throughout the entire Hudson Valley. We completed those in January of this year, and we submitted that as a demographic profile for the city. for the city. There's two other documents within the demographic profile. They were conducted by Enterprise, which is a Washington-international-based agency, and those were called Opportunity 360, and they bring about other social and economic demographics for the city based on the census tracts. The second appendix is something called the cost-burden analysis. It's very data-heavy. If you take a look at the first couple of pages, there's, there's an analysis of the city Hudson with surrounding areas and the county itself. And it provides information on renters and homeowners who are in a situation that they can afford housing, in a situation that they're paying over 30% of their income, which means they're, they are in an unaffordable situation, and those who are actually paying over 50% of their income, which means that they're severely cost-burdened. Again, data-heavy, but I would encourage you to take a look through it. The third appendix is the Affordable Housing inventory of greater Hudson. It's only a couple pages long. It provides a list in detail of what housing is available here in the Hudson area. And the last appendix is a housing resource. That was just an add-on, so to speak. It was an 18-page community resource guide for state and federal funding and other local dollars and policy that could be created, that could be utilized to make housing options available for lots of people. The plan itself has three foundational recommendations, which I would suggest that you do incorporate. The first one is to actually fund a housing coordinator, and that's to complement the work of the HCDPA and the HDC, as well as, it's also going to complement the work of the Economic Development Corporation. These are all vital agencies for the city and the county. A housing coordinator would work primarily on housing issues in the city, but it could be structured and partly funded by the county, but also work on housing issues county-wide. It would enhance partnerships with the local developers, local nonprofits, county services, and municipalities. Please understand that the towns and villages across the county must participate in affordable and the affordable housing market. It's critical that they, they look at and absorb their fair share of housing. Not everything should be based on what is happening in the city of Hudson. It's a big county. I was born here, grew up here. It's very rural in areas, there's a little bit of suburban mix in some spots, but there's also an urban center here. Your own communities throughout the state that have done this model, where you have a housing coordinator that's provided to a city by the county, you don't have to go too far. If you go to Pecy, you'll see there that there's a community development coordinator whose function is a little bit more than housing, but the county actually pays for that coordinator to sit in city hall and conduct business. There's lots of really good things that that coordinator can bring to the community, some of which you'll find in that study. I don't want to go through all of the details for that. Adopt number two, adopt an affordable housing policy. One of the suggestions I have in there is to establish something that's called a 20% set aside of new housing development to serve households earning at or below what's called 60% of the area median income, which I'll give you a couple of numbers. For example, a one-person household could qualify for one of those units if they earn no more than about $32,000 a period. Now, what does that mean? If they're earning up to $15.37 per hour, they may qualify for that unit. It's important to understand the econ, the local economy here in the city of Hudson as well, and who works in the stores, who works as a retail, who works in the, in the, in the hospital. Provides all the daily services that everybody counts on, may or may not earn much more than $15 an hour. So providing affordable housing for the suburbs that we count on every day is critical for the health of this community and the health of the county as itself. That's why that is one of the affordable housing policies that is put into place in many communities. And again, it's recommended that the city take that and move it forward. Another, another option, instead of providing a 20% set aside, is a developer could come in, and these are just random numbers, doesn't mean a developer's doing this, but if, if the developer came in and said, "I want to build 100 units," do you say, "Well, 20 has to be set aside as affordable." If they say, "No, I don't want to do that, what I'd rather do is give you affordable housing payment in sorts." Some communities have taken that payment in lieu of the G-men. The city of New Rochelle, much bigger, it's definitely closer to, to New York City, but they have a system where they absorb, they, they take a payment from a developer that goes into an affordable housing fund, and those funds are used in other community development efforts, in housing rehab, things of that nature throughout the city. That was the second recommendation. Third recommendation is to update the comprehensive plan and the zoning update. There are many recommendations in the action plan itself that walks you through some potential zoning changes. I think it's critical to take an analysis and stop what's going on with the zoning and move some of those things forward. Overall, the document has two critical words in the title, the word strategic and the word action. The plan should be viewed as a living document. It's used as a guide to accomplish and achieve a healthy balance of housing, and it's also used to support the local economy and provide quality places to live, which in turn would drastically improve, again, the health of the city. I highly recommend the housing task force remain intact and continue meeting on at least a quarterly basis. It's vital to continuing partnerships. It's vital to continuing to leverage additional funding and ensure implementation. I strongly recommend the housing coordinator, if it's so, you know, if it's selected by either the county or a combination of municipalities, county in the city, that it's actually funded and committed for, for a five-year period. And need funded for a period long enough to make a difference, and we'll see, and you'll be able to, to put success metrics in that system and really determine at the end of five years, it's, it's worth. Finally, the document does provide specifics within the housing plan that can be used by local agencies and the city as a tool for leveraging additional resources and as proof to funders, this is important, it's proof to funders that housing options and community development is a priority of the city. Without a document like this, grant writers don't have much point to say that the city will like this, the city needs this. Thank you.
There you have it. Thank you. Okay, so please study this, council members, if you're willing to accept it. The entire document is actually online? I, I have a copy.
It's actually there.
Okay, going back to some of the old business, I referred to the two letters from Stewart's and Hudson Development Board. This is just to follow up on previous business involving HDC and possible financing of planning initiatives in the city. John, would you like to speak to something else?
Well, just more broadly, considering the Strategic Housing Action Plan, considering the myriad parking concerns and traffic concerns that I received, and with a look on that, taking into consideration what the ratio, what you just said, I think, of utmost importance for the city is to truly, methodically, systematically begin a real plan, planning process here. Start a contract plan, push the NLP RFP forward, and we need to bring in the right consultant for us to do this, and it should happen immediately. And there are people within the community expressed both in business and privately and partnerships and/or initiatives that are taken together to us to really achieve this, because it will cost money, and it's money they'll spend. I think certainly addressing the contract plan is most important. I see that references, that's confusing here, but it is for 2002, 16 years on, I believe the state alderman's, like you update these things much more frequently. We really do have a serious problem with how we plan, and I would like the council to address this, and it's about doing RFP, it's about adopting an action group of community developers to try to figure out some way forward here. We're not going to grow, the only way we're going to solve a lot of these issues, we have to grow our way out of this problem. We have to do it in a way that's not how we've been doing things here, where we have existing relationships with certain developers, engineers, the county with certain projects in a very specific manner that isn't holistic, and doesn't sort of deal with the scale problem that we have here. So it's my recommendation that going forward, we start the process of really adopting, getting an ARQ and RFP out to really bring in the right type of consultant to coordinate between the HDC. If the HDC needs to have an interim head, while we have a consultant that's working with the town that's responsible for the city, to really adopt some sort of smart plan, we should sort of figure out this, these wider issues. I don't think we're ever going to grow our way out of where we're at now, which is essentially a static population with a transient flow of people coming in, tourists or other bases, something that had problems with, with the same stagnant budget issues, et cetera, et cetera. So I really think we should spearhead and push forward on that.
Well, we're fortunate enough to have not only the head of the HCDPA here tonight, but also the executive director of HDC. Is there an effort to, to, is the selection of an interim on the agenda?
Much, not, not now. No, right now, why is being considered as a job description for, for replacement of my position as the executive director of Hudson Development Corporation. And as you know, the director of Development Corporation takes on the responsibility of becoming the director of Hudson Community Development Planning Agency. So when we talk about this sort of holistic effort, it, I should step back for just a second. I am absolutely in favor of planning for the city of Hudson. I am thrilled to hear that the city is interested in investing in itself in terms of planning, infill development, and comprehensive planning, and a background, and I am thrilled to hear that Hudson is moving toward. And you have these individual vehicles, including your IDA, your industrial development agency, your Hudson Community Development Planning Agency, which is your urban renewal agency, you have an HDC, which is your nonprofit development corporation. Each of those is a pillar on the stool that holds up the city of Hudson. So those are your tools that you get to use to implement comprehensive development, whether it's infill, whether it's second, jobs-based, whether it's housing-based, whether it's farm-in, however it is that you choose to use your property, those vehicles are there to help you do that. So I can't imagine any scenario where anyone on those boards would be contradictory to moving toward a more group, holistic, kind of conjoined partnered effort to kind of figure out how to move all of this forward. I, it doesn't seem to do well when everyone is kind of trying to grapple around their own mission and trying to support those things, but coming together with plans and actually having the conversation and talking about what those options might be in a group and maybe coming together with a small committee to discuss what those options might be to bring to the floor would be great.
I, I agree. I think the, there's, I think, to me stepping back and hearing that the pressure to do certain things quickly, because we feel we're going to lose X if we don't do X, sometimes we get to everything quickly. Even with the DRI process, I believe we do have a bit of room to breathe. If we let the state go without breaking, we're going to have a serious block planning and trying to bring in amongst all these different sort of types of operation that we have here. So we really are putting a serious foot forward to really, to really get a hold of this. Instead of using piecemeal targeted solutions to solve, it's just really gets better. So that's what I'm hoping to see.
Can we suggest going forward with this RFP?
We're going to have to do it, probably in a combination of the legal committee and the Hudson Development Committee. And ideally, we should, if we could have the right consultant by the fall, I don't know what it's going to take, that would be great. Certainly, we could get a working group together, the rest of the community and the council and all the stakeholders. I think this is the time to do it. And I certainly, and even in the sense here with this communication with Stewart's, it seems that a lot of the problem in dealing with this in the legal committee has never come to me, looking at historic businesses that have been in a certain place for a long time, or certain specific issues related to the one specific zoning area. And you can imagine the different council, their racial proposals, it's probably got voted through, even that has changed that intersection a bit more. Again, it seems like they're willing to try to partner and push a solution forward that will help the city. So I'm just looking for, you know, solutions as opposed to things that we sort of, sort of box out and not get a little, you know, legal. And I think there will be funding sources in the know, whether it be a state, be it sort of, we just have to investigate this smart and see if we can use some of the DRI when it's allocated. If there's any other state avenues that can come, if we do certain zoning investigations in terms of specific areas, will be money allocated, if that we could say that money's coming in, we could use it as a, or a contract plan, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just raw thoughts. But smart planning for.
Okay. Good. Good.
I would, I would recommend that the Strategic Housing Action Plan, if you could pass a motion to approve the plan prior to the CFAs being, the consolidated funding applications being due at the end of July, because that's.
So this should work without schedule. I will, because our informal, it's the second week, and then our informal is the third week.
Because then you're, you know, whoever's filling out a blank, the agency or having to point to that.
All right. I will. Yes. Don Moore. I'm on the Hudson Development Committee board, as I suspect all of you know, and I'm speaking for myself here as a long-term member of the board, not for the board. But I do think that the suggestion that's been made here about examining, exploring whether or not there was, there are consulting firms could be brought in to, to, to take on planning, is a useful, is a useful, is a useful enterprise. HDC and what it has done, and I'm proud of it and defend it, and I think do successfully, has, has now been, it's sort of been opened up to what is, what is our, not so much what HDC is about, but what is our future about. Now, there are very specific things, the projects right now that need to be addressed in DRI and CAS warehouse, the project, et cetera. Many things need to go on at the same time. But insofar as this particular project, in my view, draws the attention of the council to examining a way, sort of looking at the level playing field in terms of planning, in terms of grant application, in terms of grant administration, all of the things that HCDPA and HDC have been doing for the city, I think that's really healthy. And I just wanted you to know that I supported wholeheartedly, you know, as a state. I had this conversation with, with John a few days ago, and it reminded me of, of the motto of the Flying Para-Mata Brothers, which is a wonderful juggling group that used to be around for a while, and their, and their motto was, "Time is the only thing that helps keeps everything from happening all at once." One of the problems we have here in a situation like this is that everything doesn't have to happen all at once, but you do have to identify the issues that you're addressing, housing, development, taxes, et cetera, and how that, what a plan looks like for the city. I think that that's, you know, that within, as to whether or not I would think the fall would be possible, you know, I honestly don't. The summer is here, if nothing else. But an intelligent and thorough look at, you know, what planning is, could be to decide, would be really helpful.
And I think we should be in the habit of retaining, as you know, on a contract basis, consultants to help us with planning, in particular, to drive the planning, or to really change the way that, to streamline some of the planning, some of the, a set application processes that come with the planning, or to, all the, all these things that are, are really, sort of, sort of move away from, the older way of doing things, into a very smart focused way, so we could grow the city here and not have this sort of. focused way, so we could grow the city here and not have this sort of static population that we're increasingly taxing to try to support deeper budget.
Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge in the audience our new Commissioner of Youth, Elderly, Education and Recreation, Mark Ryan. Would you like to stand? I hope you'll be part of the conversation before that special meeting so that we can see our way through all this.
Yes, sir.
We've talked about tonight. Delicious. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All, sent by Rob, all in favor?
Aye.
You want those?